Good evening and welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting for October 23rd. I'd like to call the meeting to order.
I'd like to call the meeting, the October 23rd meeting of the Milton School Committee to order.
Tonight, we have just a couple of agenda items, but the main topic is a discussion on the Department of Revenue Financial Review. And before we get into introducing our Department of Revenue people here, I'd like to introduce people at the table here. We have Linda Lee Sheridan, who's the Chairman of the Board of the School Committee, Tom Hurley Selectman, Dennis Cohane Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, Katie Conlon is a Selectman, and Rick Neely, who is the Chairman of the Town Government Study Committee. Over here, we have Zach Blake from the Department of Revenue, along with Melinda Ordway, and we'd like to welcome you. Most of you know that the Town Government Study Committee recommended to the Board of Selectmen that the Board of Selectmen and the School Committee commissioned the Department of Revenue to conduct a financial management review. With recommendations given and presented here tonight. So at this time, I would like to introduce Zach Blake, who is going to give probably a 10 or 15 minute presentation. At the end of the presentation, we will open it up to questions and answers from the public. Not, well, first the Board and then the public. I see some Department Heads here as well. We'd like to open up to Department Heads first before we open it up to the public. And Zach will try and answer as many as he can. We will try and answer as many as we can. And it's very, very important because we've been getting a lot of phone calls and emails from staff in Town Hall thinking that this is, these recommendations are in concrete. It's very important to know that this is just a discussion, no more than a discussion tonight. So I'd like to introduce Zach Blake.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Board for inviting us in tonight. It's a pleasure to have been invited out here to do the financial management review for the town of Milton. Can everybody hear me okay? I tend to be a little quiet sometimes. I work for, my name is Zach Blake. I was the project manager who conducted the financial management review. I worked for the Department of Revenue's Divisional Local Services. With me tonight is Melinda Ordway. She's a Senior Financial Analyst as well, and she was part of the team that conducted the review. Just real briefly, the Department of Revenue's Divisional Local Services is a state agency focused on overseeing the financial management practices of the Commonwealth's 351 cities and towns. Within that, it's primarily a regulatory agency through the Bureau of Accounts and Bureau of Local Assessments, which is involved with certifying your tax rate, or setting your tax rate, certifying your free cash and property values. Melinda and I work for a smaller team in the Technical Assistance Bureau that provides consultant-type services to cities and towns at no charge. Over the course of the seven years that I've been with the Department of Revenue in Mindy, I think it's over 20 at this point, we've gained a pretty broad knowledge base of best practices related to various policies and procedures in financial management for the various, you know, cities and towns. And that information, we make available on our website through a series of best practices, financial calculators, but also through conducting these financial management reviews. Very briefly, in September, we delivered this financial management review to the Board of Selectmen and the School Committee. The review involved interviews with a number of local officials, including the Town Administrator, the Town Accountant, the Treasure Collector, the Assessor, the Superintendent and her staff, who I see here tonight, as well as members of the Board of Selectmen. We spoke with each of you, members of the Warrant Committee, and of course, the Government Study Committee, who initiated this in the first place. The study we conducted involved the wide, our examination of a wide range of municipal documents. This included Town Meeting warrants, outside audit reports, credit rating profiles, submissions to the Department of Revenue, as well as other assorted documents and financial records. We also reviewed financial practices and procedures and policies that guide decisions between and among offices. We look to ensure that financial checks and balances are in place. And we review the level of communication among all involved. This is the various boards, committees, as well as interdepartmentally. And then, more broadly, we view the overall structure of government and how it operates. And the real desire here is just looking at, how can we make things more efficient and effective? These are recommendations only. It's up to the community to debate them, hopefully vigorously, and come up what they think is the solution for the town of Milton. I'm just an outside third party providing an opinion. With that, you know, we found Milton to be a pretty dynamic community. You're consistently rated one of the best places to live by sort of outside NGOs, if you will. And you have a top-rated school system, a stable economic environment, you've got low unemployment levels. And at the same time, you've done a pretty amazing job of managing the community through what has been a historic economic, really difficult environment over the last, God, it's almost five or more years at this point. The town, through this, maintains a strong AA bond rating through standards and pores. Reserve levels, including stabilization and free cash, are at historically high levels, although they're not quite at benchmarks that we look for. And the town's debt service levels are, continue to sort of be at a modest level, in our opinion. Local officials also operate under a philosophy of conservative budget practices and tight expenditure controls, which is something that we often look for. Other than that, we found that the town really benefits from an experienced set of professionals in Town Hall, who manage everyday functions of government. We found department managers and staff to be knowledgeable and experienced, that overall sound practices and procedures are in place, and that sort of the everyday business of government is getting completed. This includes town receipts that are being collected and accounted for, vendor and payroll warrants are being processed and approved, and town obligations are being met. So, you know, with that, I think this is really an opportunity to thank staff for being so transparent and meeting with me. Oftentimes, it's difficult to have somebody from the outside reviewing operations, and sometimes you can feel that these assessments, or audits, if you will, can be critical. But I think the staff here should be really commended for their willingness to speak with us and their transparency, and I commend them for working hard on the people of Milton every day. That's what we witnessed when we were here. Towards this end, you know, Milton is sort of, I think I called in the report at a crossroads. You're looking for opportunities to be more effective and efficient. So with that in mind, we delved into, you know, what opportunities are out there? And the report is really divided into three sections. The Government Structure and Organization section, which is really focused on sort of the broad umbrella that everything falls under. The Budget and Financial Planning section, and then the overall financial management section, which really gets into sort of the details and internal controls within the individual offices. Of our primary recommendations in the Government Structure and Organization section, these are really intended to strengthen Milton's government structure and mitigate future risk. What I looked for there was sort of reinforcing this notion of a centralized management structure. And in doing that, I suggest empowering the Town Administrator, expanding the responsibilities of, I don't know if it's been filled at this point, but the Assistant Town Manager for HR, and creating a new Assistant Town Administrator for Finance, which we envision overseeing a sort of larger consolidated Department of Finance. Beyond that, we talk about expanding the size of the Board of Selectmen, as well as redirecting some of the roles and responsibilities to the Warrant Committee. And these are really, these three main recommendations are really designed to be taken collectively. We think with potentially bringing on some new staff and strengthening sort of that core management model, we'd look to see the Board of Selectmen really transitioning to a Board of Directors. And that's not to say that's not how you operate now, but with such a large, $100 million budget, 30,000 residents, dynamic community, I think that's what we're looking for, is just sort of more representation there. And then really with the, as far as redirecting the roles and responsibilities to the Warrant Committee, this is really about empowering the Town Administrator. And this is a professional that you hire to really carry out the strategy, really the collective strategy of the Board of Selectmen, the Warrant Committee, the School Committee in moving the town forward. And so there, the primary vehicle is the budget, as we typically find in cities and towns. And so really, we think the budget process should start there, with the Town Manager, who would put together revenue projections and really shepherd the budget process through, to the Board of Selectmen, to the Warrant Committee, and then ultimately to Representative Town Meeting. Other than those recommendations, we offer recommendations for budget and financial planning. Those involve preparing a five-year financial forecast in order to really align what the town's priorities are with individual department goals. And I think this is a, this is a shift that communities are beginning. I mentioned Arlington. There are a number of other communities that are sort of looking at strategic planning more broadly, and what does that mean? So a lot of this is sort of going through a visioning process and really learning about, you know, what are the community's priorities, and what do we want to look like, you know, three to five years out, is how I've characterized it here. And so it's a matter of defining what those are through community outreach, and then working on the individual department level to come up with a game plan of how we're going to meet those priorities. Other than that, this section recommends establishing enterprise funds and developing written indirect cost policies, continuing those efforts to build reserves, like I talked about earlier, adopting an OPEB trust, and modifying the warrant for Town Meeting. And, you know, my comments there weren't designed to be overly critical of the Warrant Committee. I think you guys do a tremendous job. It's just, sometimes, information can be overwhelming, and so it's looking at areas where, maybe streamlining that, so that folks who are sort of not invested in town government every day can really absorb that information. And then lastly, we did, excuse me, a series of recommendations focused on sort of the overall financial management practices and procedures in the offices of the Town Accountant, Treasure Collector, and the Assessors. And really in there, and not to get into too much detail, it's about addressing outstanding audit findings, automating time in attendance, consolidating collections, and expanding processing options, and eliminating the cash voucher system, just as an example. And speaking with staff beforehand, it's my understanding that a number of these, they're, they've already completed or moved forward on, so I think staff are commended for that. You know, with that, I think it's important to, you know, be here for your questions, and to really have a dialogue between and among the various folks in town here. So I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
I'm wondering if Rick, do you want to add anything at this stage?
I just think I'd, let me reiterate in terms of the reason that the, again, the study was asked for was that as, you know, we as a committee began to, on a part-time, lay basis, sit down and meet with various department heads, the feeling was that, in terms of getting into the details and understanding what the best practices were that was referred to by Zach, we thought that it made sense, since there were over 250 cities and towns in the Commonwealth that had taken advantage of this, that we in Milton have never done that. And it was an opportunity to understand what our colleagues are doing elsewhere in the Commonwealth, and take advantage of that, and at least listen to it, still retain the opportunity here in the town to debate the, you know, recommendations, and go through and evaluate whether these things make sense for Milton. But certainly, as citizens individually, on a lay basis, coming and meeting on, you know, once or twice a month on a meeting, you're not going to learn or understand what goes on in all the other cities and towns, and what works and what doesn't work. So we thought that with the expertise of the folks that have been out visiting other cities and towns, that it made sense to have the Department of Revenue come in and tell us at least what choices we have, what are the options we have. And the goal here is simply to try to improve the efficiencies and practices in the town. This is all intended for the best intent of the citizens, so that the citizens get the best for their services, and that we're efficient in how we spend the taxpayers' dollars.
Thank you, Rick. Well, at this stage, I think we should open it up to questions, in particular from Board Members here of the School Committee. I know the School Committee is here, and the Board Members up here. I don't know if you want to start, Tom?
Yeah, first question, Zach. The role of the Town Administrator, you know, most of what I read, I agree with. I agree, we need a, you know, we have way too big a budget, you know, $100 million is way too difficult for a part-time Board of Selectmen to try and manage the day-to-day operations of, or have control of the day-to-day. And we really should be more of a Board of Governance, as opposed to a, and policymaking. But that being said, it's, to do it through a Home Rule Amendment or a Home Rule Petition is a long process. And some of this, if we want to make it permanent, would have to be done that way. I guess my question is, there are probably certain things that even though it wouldn't be permanent, that we could, as a Board of Selectmen, pass down to the Town Administrator, in other words, give her that authority, even in a way to see how it worked. Now, I guess my question is, how far could we go with that, if you know?
Yeah, it's-
Can people report to her? Can we give her that authority? Granted, another Board could change that authority.
Yeah, exactly. Unfortunately, first of all, it's set up now, there's very little detail in terms of the definition of the Town Administrators, you know, and I think you mentioned once Anne Marie in the town charter. And there's no specific duties or anything laid out, so it's really left to a job description, which is really at the whim of, you know, sort of who's ever her boss at the time, as the three Board Members. So the intent here is to codify what that job is for the town, which is the reason why we talked about going through special legislation here. As far as your ability, sort of outside the jurisdiction of the Board of Selectmen, there's not really a lot that you can do with independently elected boards and staff. And so, you know, I don't want to give any for instance or anything like that, but if there's a department that's, just refuses to undertake a strategy that's determined the best course of action by the Board of Selectmen, they don't have to abide by it. And so, that's really why we're looking at here, is, and I hate to use private sector analogies, is really creating that CEO type of position. Somebody who's overseeing the entire organization in the $100 million budget that you have. This is a lot of money. And, you know, we look at sort of mitigating risk, and in our mind, moving to a strong centralized management approach over the long term reduces that risk.
Okay, just as a follow-up to that, though, if I'm hearing you correctly, at least the, we could give our Town Administrator, or have Department Heads and Departments that are under our direct control, report directly to her, as opposed to having to report to the Board of Selectmen?
Yeah, by and large. I mean, without looking at town bylaws and everything right on hand. Yeah, I would think so.
Okay. Anybody, I don't, you have a question?
I do. I don't know, Tom had others that I might jump ahead of you.
No, go ahead. We can kind of bounce back.
Okay. The request for this review, Zach, came from both the Board of Selectmen and the School Committee, and there's not a lot of reference to school functions in the, or operations in the report. And I'm, I think, members of the School Committee, members of this Board, over the years, have kind of looked at ways to consolidate services, maybe human resources, maybe financial operations, administrative operations. I'm wondering if you could just talk a little bit about why you didn't specifically address some school issues, and what you've learned from other towns that might help, whether consolidation is or is not something that we should be looking at in more depth?
Sure. You know, I realize at the outset, this was a, our call to come in here was a request of the Board of Selectmen and the School Committee. To be quite honest, I'm not an expert in school matters. We reached out to the Superintendent and her staff, and we spoke to them. They were open and willing to have conversations with us about consolidation. However, when we sort of recognized that those conversations were already sort of taking place, whether it's IT or HR, we sort of stepped back and said, okay, what do we need to do to sort of strengthen the core of municipal management here? And that's really the design of this report. You mentioned what other communities are doing more broadly across the state. Certainly, with the challenging sort of economic climate that's out there, this is something that communities are looking for in efficiencies and being more effective, and certainly sharing resources and consolidating resources between the towns and the school. We haven't seen a whole lot of it at this point, so there's not a lot of models out there for us to really point to. In fact, I've used this community as a model for your consolidated facilities in other communities that I've done reports from. So, it's just sort of an evolving field, is how I would respond to that.
No, that primarily was my question. You know, we, that was primarily my question.
Okay. I do a follow-up to what Katie was, I mean, I've been talking to Anne Marie for quite a while, trying to, and just because our schedule's been so hectic, but trying to get a, and hopefully we will soon, a joint meeting between the School Committee and the Board of Selectmen, just to really look at, maybe putting a committee together of some sort, to look at those possibilities, you know, could IT be, you know, and, you know, are there any accounting functions that could be, you know, non-school, you know, non-education functions that could possibly be?
So Anne Marie's already reached out to us, and we've put that on our agenda for our next meeting, which doesn't happen until November 6th, but we'll choose a representative to come, to be a part of that committee initially, and then, I think that's the way I heard it. And then, obviously, both committees in full, but-
And who knows what comes of it, but at least it's a dialogue, that we can start something.
Definitely are willing to have that discussion.
Okay, great. Glad to hear that.
Yeah, go ahead. Is the Board-
I have, well, at least one other question. The other question I had, Zach and Melinda, is, you talk a lot about the role of the Town Administrator, the role of the new, who hasn't, role hasn't been filled yet, but the Assistant Town Administrator for Human Resources, and then another Assistant Town Administrator for Finance. And in taking part in the search committee for the new Assistant Town Administrator, and just grappling with six months, you know, into office, which is my situation, I'm finding that there's probably a role for further management support, not only in the Selectmen's office, but also in the planning office. And your report doesn't touch as much on the planning function, but we have a town planner who has a lot on his plate. He has a number of projects going on in town. I guess I'm just wondering if you looked at that, and if you had any suggestions for, maybe if there might be a way to have some crossover support between planning and the Selectmen? The town planner reports to two different boards, probably could use some additional assistance, which we've talked about, and we're looking at ways that we might, a lot of it is budget-driven, and whether we have the resources to add another position, which has been the reason that there hasn't been any additional support in that area. But if we focus, if we focus the Assistant Town Administrator on Human Resources and on Finance, and if we increase the duties of the Town Administrator, do we need more management support in the office? Is that something you've seen in other towns? Are we lean in comparison to management in other towns, or are we on par?
I think, I don't have a lot of say related to planning specifically. I didn't interview the Town Planner, so I don't have a lot, a background there. As far as your overall staffing levels, I didn't study that specifically, but, you know, anecdotally, I would say that you don't have, you're very lean in your staff here, that there are not a sort of lot of extra bodies floating around, which is just characteristic of municipalities in general. Budgets are so tight, they can't really afford to bring on a lot of other people, and so you have to think very strategically about, okay, if we're going to bring somebody on, what are the duties and responsibilities of this person going to be? You know, but of course, when we came in here, certainly found a Town Administrator that's working extremely hard for this community, working sort of above and beyond in a lot of ways. You have a vacancy in what I perceive as a very core job in this Assistant Town Administrator for HR. This is a growing field that's only getting more complicated as time goes on. At the same time, there was no sort of peer related to financial management, and that's what we were looking to create, is really a position to support the Town Administrator in carrying out the budget and financial planning under this new centralized sort of management structure that we outlined. Speaking, just stepping back a little bit to your comments about opportunities between the town and the school, certainly in areas of HR, I think you could benefit from conversations about, you know, is there a way to potentially have someone who's an Assistant Town Manager for HR located here, also helping support the schools in some way? So those are conversations to have.
Just a follow-up on that, Katie. A couple of things. First of all, to support kind of what Zach said, in terms of us being lean, and again, you know, the Pioneer Institute has a certain bent to it, but they do have a spreadsheet that you can pull up, and will, you know, basically compare you against benchmark communities. And far and away, we are one of the lowest, in terms of percentage of total budget that goes towards the administrative sector, far and away, you know, the lowest percentage of a budget going to those functions compared to other communities. So we are really lean. The other thing I just wanted to mention, too, is this new HR position, if you think of what, I think one thing that would help Anne Marie is, that the idea would be that this person would also be in charge of the collective bargaining function to a great degree. And right now, I think that takes up a tremendous amount of the Anne Marie's time. So it would free her up, clearly, you know, to a degree. I don't know what you think about that, Anne Marie?
No, I agree. I agree with your comments.
My question really was just if we, if we're going to be giving more duties to the Town Administrator, and the Town Administrator is really the equivalent of our CEO, do we need a COO in addition to Finance and Human Resources, who might have a role to play, not only in management, but in the planning function, or some sort of support for other town operations? Again, it's driven by budget, and there may not be the funding for it, but at some point, if there is, would that be a model that other towns might have?
Yeah, I mean, you know, in the report, I talk about a CFO, and certainly, I envisioned, and I think I took out the language of a COO counterpart with the Assistant Town Administrator for HR, but I certainly think that's something to look at. As far as other models, I mentioned the town of Needham in here. They have a very similar model. I would also, there are a handful of communities that I can point to, but I'd also look at, say, the town of Lexington, for example, in how their staffing situation is put together. But, you know, I'm happy to offer those communities. We have databases that we maintain internally on the various structures, and I'm happy to offer those to the Board Members and to the Town Administrator.
Okay, thank you.
Zach, one of your, I'm sorry, we'll get to you in a second. One of your recommendations is expanding the Board of Selectmen from three members to five members. Can you expand on that a little bit? What advantages and disadvantages there is, and what other towns with similar budgets and population have five members?
Yeah, there is, I don't remember the data off the top of my head, but majority of communities your size are five-member boards. And really, it's designed, and I say in the recommendations, three-member boards are really designed to sort of have an executive function, where they're really taking on more of the day-to-day responsibilities. They have a- They have a low-level executive secretary or a very sort of weak town administrator. And so they're really taking on more of the activities that, quite frankly, you're probably not aware of because, you know, Anne Marie is taking care of those for you. When you move into a community with a $100 million budget and a population right around 30,000, you know, I think this is the sort of the transition point, even before that, where you start to look at broader representation for the community. And that's really what this is about. And so expanding to, from a three to a five-member board. One of the criticisms that we always hear is, well, it's incredibly difficult to get people to run for, you know, local office anyways. How are we supposed to find two people who are going to run for the Board of Selectmen? And I've seen on several occasions now, in my town included, where when the decision was made to expand to a five-member board, all of a sudden, there wasn't this sense that we have to battle an incumbent, that there is an open seat that is competitive. And so folks, that they come out of the woodwork, but there's, you know, there's a willingness to run for something and compete for a new position there. So I wouldn't let that sort of hinder any kind of decision-making locally. I think if the board was to expand, you'd see folks come out for that. But it's really too to take the load off of you folks. There's a lot of planning that's involved and certainly carrying out this document takes a lot of work. And it's just easier to spread that burden across five as opposed to three people. Recommendation's not designed to be critical of you folks. The other part of it is too, is to create broader stability. In a three-member board, you know, we see occasions where there is turnover and philosophies change. And as a result, there isn't the stability that we'd be looking for in, say, the town administrator position or other functions. And so it, I mentioned earlier, it's about mitigating risk and how do you do that? And expanding the board is one way. But again, I wouldn't take this out of context and just say that's one individual recommendation. These are really designed to be taken collectively and shifting this to really a Board of Directors type of a model, if you will. Okay, Rick.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a follow-up question to that in terms of, I also was going to focus on the five-member Board of Selectmen. The question I have is, is there a correlation with towns that have less elected boards and the linkage to the five-member Board of Selectmen? So for example, if you have a lot of elected boards which have their own budgets, even though you cited a large $100 million budget, if the elected boards all have their individual budgets outside the control of the Selectmen, I guess my question is, is there a correlation with those towns that have five boards of Selectmen and less elected other boards?
That's a good question. I haven't looked at that specifically. I'm trying to just think sort of anecdotally. I don't know if you have any.
Yeah, I've had four that have, despite having five members on the Board of Selectmen, having independent elected DPW commissioners, elected treasure collectors. So that was a very horizontal management structure.
Yeah, I mean, as far as peer communities in the area that have a flat management model like that in a five-member board, I'm thinking the only one off the top of my head would be Wellesley. So, sorry, Rick.
All right. Mr. Chairman, just a second question. That is on the Audit Committee function. So I think you're correct that if you strengthen the CEO aspect and the financial aspect, then you get to the issue of the Audit function. And I just want to go back to your recommendation on the Audit function. And in the Audit function, I guess you talk about in item two, the selection of the Audit. What I'd like to know is who actually would the Auditor in the future report to and who would be the actual hiring agent and who engages the Auditor? So is it still the Board of Selectmen or is it the moderator or is it who is?
Well, given procurement rules, it's ultimately, you know, the Board of Selectmen that are the ones who are procuring the services. However, you're sort of, you know, dishing this off to this Audit Committee who's going through the selection process. This committee would be made up of outside residents. These aren't staff. These aren't other local officials. This is an independent body.
If we had the moderator, for example, appointing the Audit Committee, would the moderator be the appointing authority?
That's certainly one way of addressing it, yeah.
I'm just looking for the independence aspect.
Yeah, I would have the moderator. I mean, if I was designing this board, I would have the moderator appointing this committee. It's greater independence than having, you know, the Board of Selectmen or even a shared appointment with, say, the Warrant Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, you're welcome. Okay.
I thought you asked, yes. Let me think of what it was again. A couple of things. Number one is the role of the, and I guess I'm talking before we, before we actually do a charter amendment or try and consolidate functions within town government, there must be examples of other governments or, you know, other cities and towns that have many separate elected boards, but the budget function is performed at the town administrator or the Assistant Town Administrator level. And they're in charge, they're charged with submitting a balanced budget. How is that accomplished when you have all those other separate elected boards that you really don't have per se control over their budget?
Yeah.
You do have control of the purse strings directly, I guess.
Right. Well, it's not institutionalized in any way. And so a lot of it boils down to, you know, what is past practice and what has the culture of that organization been over, you know, the last century or so. And some communities, for whatever reason, have developed a culture where they do have this sort of centralized approach to doing the budget and others have not, which is one of the reasons why we look to formalize these kinds of relationships through documenting various processes and procedures, you know, whether it's the budget process, capital planning, free cash, stabilization fund. That way, you formalize these sort of arrangements and really, like I said, institutionalize them as part of the community.
I mean, I do agree that presenting a balanced budget and doing the forecasting is a management function and not really a Warrant Committee function, that the Warrant Committee's role, as you said, should be more that of a watchdog agency or committee and one that reports recommendations to town meeting after studying what the town has presented to them, as opposed to them having ownership of a budget, trying to defend it in front of town meeting, kind of doesn't make any sense where they're supposed to be the watchdog recommender of the budget. I think it would be a better role if it did evolve that way.
You follow up, Katie? Anything else?
Just like to say one thing. So when you're discussing the possibility of not having as many elected boards on, around town, the School Committee is really exempt from that discussion.
Yes.
Of course.
I just want to be clear with that because probably the view in public doesn't necessarily know that.
That's a fair comment, yes.
Well, just one follow-up on that too. I don't think anybody's talking about having fewer elected boards necessarily, but the, some of the functions, the operating functions of some of those boards, for example, parks and cemeteries, in your report, would report through a DPW or the Town Administrator and that the separate elected boards would set the policies of their particular, for example, parks would decide on park policies-
Right.
-as opposed to managing the parks.
Exactly right. And, you know, I apologize if that wasn't clear in the report. You know, Boards of Health, Library, School Committee, these aren't going away. It's a matter of transitioning from sort of what might be, you know, meant, what we would see as traditionally management-related responsibilities to what their really core function is, is to develop policy. And so we look at holding staff accountable as sort of, and the authority of the town administrator in this case to really carry out the strategy that's collectively developed by the town throughout the various offices. When you have independently elected boards especially, you can just run into tensions. Not that this is the case here, but we've seen where there are DPW boards who are just unwilling to sort of buy into maybe a strategy with the Board of Selectmen and the Town Administrator. And so we, you know, we're just looking to prevent those types of things from happening.
And the only other thing I wanted to get there for everybody listening too, is most of what we're talking about here can't happen without a, an amendment to the Town Charter, which there are two ways to do. One is called a Home Rule Charter Amendment. What that involves is, first of all, a petition by 15% of the registered voters coming to the Board of Selectmen. Then within 30 days, the Board of Selectmen are required to put on, to vote to put on the next election ballot. Two questions. One is, do you want it? And the second one is the election of a Charter Committee. The Charter Committee then meets. They have 16 months to submit a draft report, 18 months to present a final report. That report goes to the Attorney General and DH, is it DHCD?
Yeah.
For some odd reason. And for vetting. And then comes back and then gets put on the ballot again to be voted. It's a long process and certainly not an assured process of passing. The other way is the typical Home Rule, Home Rule Amendment route that we do for LECO licenses here. Probably a little more involved than that because, as I understand it, you really need a Study Committee and a few other things, but that would be a Board of Selectmen-appointed Study Committee?
Yeah, I mean, you already have sort of an existing structure with this Government Study Committee and so maybe, you know, amending their charge.
Correct.
But they would make a series of recommendations and draft a Charter Amendment or, you know, a new Charter in this case.
But that would still have to go before the, you know, the Charter.
Absolutely. It would be approved by town meeting. It would have to be a vote by the electorate and then it would go through the legislature.
Yep. So it's a long process either way.
Yeah. I mean, you're looking at a year or more.
You good?
I'm good.
Thank you. Okay, at this stage, we will open it up to the public. Mike, do you want to put the, so invite anybody who wants to come up, come to this microphone, ask your question, and either Zach or Melinda or Rick can answer it. Don't be shy, come on up. If you could just introduce yourself.
Hi, my name is Ekal Ramora. I'm a town meeting member. And I am asking a question that isn't directly addressed in your report, although it's glossed over in the introduction. You mentioned that our tax revenue is largely derived from residential users and that this could be a challenge and that we rely on overrides frequently to fund our operating budget. I'm wondering if you can tell us whether or not that is on pace with the percentage of residential tax revenue in other communities our size, and also if you feel as though this is a sustainable financial model for the future.
The way, for me to respond to that, first of all, I'm not an economic development expert, so it's very hard for me in a, sort of an easy way to outline what I would envision for this community, nor is that my role here. That's really a community decision. As far as sustainability, look, it's going to be difficult when you have a largely residential base to, you know...
With minimal property growth and development, that will increase your levy beyond the two and a half percent. And that, given those circumstances, there are other communities like you, one being Arlington, and they have taken a very unique approach to it. They realize every five years, they're looking at the voters for a general override to sustain the current level of operations and the services that the community is demanding. And that what they'll do, what they have done, which is unique, is they've done like a three- to five-year forecast, establishing a number by which it has been approved and it's done more than once. And that they only use a small percentage and that it's a step up each year in terms of delivering the full amount, but a lot of it goes right to a special stabilization fund. And that it is then drawn upon to then raise the level of services. And that it allows them to get, in many instances, they've done a three-year projection and they've actually made it into beyond five years. But again, it's, you can't really compare yourselves in terms of population. It's more of the level of development and what availability there is for communities. Many fully built communities, their development is more coming from unfortunately knocking down longstanding homes, smaller homes and developing larger, you know, residential homes. And that it, where it could be a two-bedroom previously and now it's a four-bedroom, you have to look at the impact on the level of services for the community. Again, that's one of the things that we've encompassed in this report is to look at where are you now and where do you want to be? And to develop the financial models that will put you on course and develop a check and balance so it doesn't end up going out of control.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to come up and ask a question? Jean?
Hi, Jean Wilson, Chair of the Warren Committee last year. I just wanted to say, I really appreciate the fact that we might be looking at a different model for a Warren Committee. Last year, when I was the Chair, I easily spent 1,200 to 1,400 hours on this, on top of a full-time job, which was exhausting, on top of having children in college and looking for colleges. Thank you, everybody, for the help that I received. It was wonderful. I couldn't have done it without them. And there were many nights, two, three in the morning, I was sitting there thinking, however could I do this job without having the skills that I have? I happened to be an actuary. I've been an actuary for 30 years, so I have a lot of math and mathematical skills, legal skills. But every step of that year was a learning experience from talking to the Town Council, again, who was incredibly helpful. But there's no guide. And there was no guide last year. So if I wasn't creative enough to ask questions, I would never have gotten through it. We have a huge budget, being given 10, 15 budgets and asked to put them together. Running a committee of 15 people is a lot. So could you just explain how we could, how this would work with a new position that would be a financial manager and then what the role of the Warren Committee would evolve into?
Yeah, you know, I think the report addresses that a little bit and sort, Tom, you spoke to that even, and it's really a matter of shifting gears, whereas historically, it's, the Warren Committee has shouldered a lot of that, you know, burden, if you will, in putting together the initial revenue projections, sending out the budget documentation, collecting that budget documentation, putting that in together and omnis budget and then really shepherding that through the process, you know, holding hearings and then presenting it to town meeting. In this case, what we're looking for is shifting those responsibilities to the town administrator and in this case, it would be the Assistant Town Administrator for Finance. So that individual, working with department heads, would put together, and as well as the Board of Selectmen and the Warren Committee, would put together initial revenue projections. It would be, it would then be the town administrator's budget message, whether it's level funded, level service, 5% increase, whatever. That then would be sent to, you know, depending on how you choose to do it, to the Board of Selectmen for their review. And then, once they have a chance to look at it, it would go to the Warren Committee. And really, what I would be looking for there, I talk about in the report, is this idea of the financial watchdog, if you will. And so you would be assessing, okay, these are the financial policies of the community. Are they, does this budget meet what those policies are, say, related to use of free cash, stabilization fund, level of debt? And in a lot of ways, if the budget message was to be level service, for instance, and you did your assessment, you saw, you know, two-thirds of the departments came in at level service, there's not a little, a lot that you would have as far as sort of critical dialogue with those departments. They've met sort of the policy that's been set forth at the beginning of the budget process. You would then focus on those departments that are looking for, to go above and beyond that. And so that's- And so that's sort of how we would see this transition taking shape.
Anyone else want to come up? Hey, Darnell.
Darnell Turner, fourth year warrant committee member, town meeting member, fifteen-plus years, resident of town over twenty. I went through this report and I did focus on a number of things. One of the things I was looking at is, I see a lot of information about, let's get a second financial assistant administrator, add a lot of powers to the administrator and things to that nature. And I'm like, okay, that would be great, but I didn't see ways to finance those positions at a time in which there's not a lot of money out, there is no money out there. From looking at the budget and everything else. And I was hoping we would get some ideas of how to add revenue into the system. Do you, did y'all look at any ports of that in a town that's about three percent commercial base?
Yeah, like I said earlier, you know, my, my job here is not to look at economic development and sort of future growth at the town. Recommending new positions is something that we struggle with quite a bit internally. We have a lot of debate as to whether or not, because we recognize that there is a limited pot of money out there. And to dedicate additional resources to salary and especially benefits is a big hurdle. So what we often try to do is offset establishing a new position with offering some efficiencies here. I think in a lot of ways, that discussion was already ongoing, related to consolidating IT, there's talk about HR. So as far as economic development, there's not a lot that I had to offer, but there are some efficiencies sort of around the edges that you could look at. Look, I, I wish when I came and made these presentations that I came with a giant check from the state, but unfortunately, it's just not the reality. Federal, state and local governments are all struggling and we look, we have to really look at being creative going forward. And I think that's sort of what this report's designed to do is to get some sort of a dialogue going about how are we going to meet these future obligations.
Yeah, I'd like to just add to that, Darnell, that, first of all, this, this is a long-range goal, it's not a short-range goal. It's not my view at least, and I think I speak for the other two selectmen, to, to see a restructuring and layoff of personnel. I, I see a long-range plan to try and consolidate, to try and make government more efficient and then through attrition accomplish those, those needs. The only way I would see layoffs happening in this town is physically if we don't have the money. And, and that happens as a matter of course, it happens in the schools, it's happened on the town side in the past when, when revenues aren't enough. In terms of adding a position, if we added a, an assistant town administrator for finance, we probably wouldn't add a position. At this point, we'd probably combine the town accountant and the assistant administrator for finance as one position initially, until such time as we could, through that reorganization and attrition, free up perhaps some additional funding to, to create that extra position.
You want to come back up there now?
Yeah.
Yep, come on up.
And also in the report, they talked about strengthening the position of the town administrator, which I would be all for. But the problem I've seen in working in town government, working with the different departments and stuff, if there's a lot of control over the town side and there's not a correspondent control on the school side, forty-five to fifty percent of our budget is on the school side, how would that play in your, in your view of what this would be of the strengthening of administrator? Because I found one of the biggest problems with putting a budget together is trying to figure out where that money is going to go and how that money is going to be spent and where it's going to go to. So just strengthening the administrator of the town side doesn't guarantee that on the school side, we're going to have that merit. So I just want to see your vision, how you envision those things coming together, selecting board and everything else and making that work.
In, in strengthening the town administrator role, I think what's going to happen naturally is that your superintendent is going to see somebody that they will be able to work with. That has sort of the same level of, you know, reporting and accountability with department heads and staff. And so it's really, she's somebody who's going to be, Emery's somebody who's going to be able to work with the, the school committee and, and the superintendent to really formulate, you know, how are we going to move this community, what is affordable? And so it's really, it becomes sort of equal footing and they become a team.
Can I just respond to that and say that under the leadership of Superintendent Gormly, I think through several town administrators, we've had a very strong, positive working relationship. And in terms of the school committee, that would be our expectation going forward. And I have no reason to think that it wouldn't be anything other than that.
Anyone else, Mike?
Good evening, I'm Mike Zulis, I'm a member of the school committee. And I want to follow up on the questions and comments about consolidation of activities between town and school. And ask you if you have any thoughts on how best to explore those opportunities that you mentioned in the report? And if the division of local services would be in a position to assist in exploring those opportunities for consolidation.
It sounds like sort of the groundwork has already been established. If I heard correctly, that there's a committee that's being put together. That's certainly the approach that I would take. I don't know what the structure or the makeup of, maybe you can speak to this. But that's certainly the approach that I would take, is forming a committee to investigate this further. Whether that's, you know, maybe a collection of folks internal in the school as well as the town and maybe one or two folks from the outside, I think makes sense. As far as our relationship, you know, I don't want to pretend that we've written this report and, you know, it's off to the sunset for us. You know, we have an ongoing relationship with cities and towns through our tax rate setting process, certifying free cash and whatnot. And I am certainly always a resource for the community to bounce questions off of. As far as participation, active participation in something like that, you know, that's something that we would have to go back to our, you know, division leaders and ask them if they'd be willing to do that. But that being said, you know, we're out there looking at opportunities and, and searching for new models. So certainly there might be a willingness to do that.
Again, we also have had discussions with communities that have gone through similar consolidation plans, whether it be IT or HR. We can reference you to those communities for the simple reason that some of them have had great successes, others have made it midway. And now they have more of, again, quite often bringing the both, the, the town and the school operations together under one department head. There's often a concern from the, the two different political bodies, how do you get them, who reports to whom first? Who gets a priority if there's a dollar that arrives unexpectedly? Setting up those procedures, setting up that information, providing a constant flow of information. The same with having to mold together existing staffs that would potentially fall under different contracts. That is often a sticking point. And that, again, we can give reference to those communities that we've had dealings with. And that many of them have gone on the road talking to other communities, also contemplating this, this type of move.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Ted Hayes, I'm a town meeting member, I'm the current warrant committee chair. I want to thank Jean and Darnell for voicing some of our concerns as a committee. And I do have a question. Are there no other communities that you've looked at that have a successful warrant committee budget-led model? In other words, a finance committee or a warrant committee that does develop and finish the budget? That doesn't seem to be the model that you recommend. And I'm wondering, I don't want to give you an answer, but I'm wondering if that has something to do with your, your thought that strengthening the town administrator's position would mitigate risk? And perhaps you could explain what those risks are, in your view?
I think in a lot of ways, you're experiencing that and your former chair articulated that. You are a volunteer body. It's a, a large body and you're taking on significant responsibilities. It's very difficult to ask somebody who has a full-time job and responsibilities outside of town hall to not only get up to speed, but then to carry what is an extremely rigorous process through. It's, it's not about suggesting that you didn't do a good job or anything like that. This isn't, you know, our report's not here being critical of the work that you do. I think in a lot of ways, because of the structure that exists, you're filling a void there historically. But given the turnaround that you've experienced more recently and, and really with the hopes of sort of building a bench of folks who have extended long-term knowledge about municipal finance, we're looking for this, this shift. And I think that in a lot of ways, the town administrator specifically is really the boots on the ground. They're there every day, they live and breathe this. They're really, have a, have a strong sense of, you know, what really are the needs and how do we balance these out between and among departments? It's very hard for you to come in, you know, on a seasonal basis and sort of make those judgment calls.
So, so if you could just tell me, are there any models out there that are successful? That are, where the responsibility for the final budget does lie with the warrant committee or the finance committee? I thought you had mentioned Arlington often as a.
Yeah, Arlington is certainly.
Exemplar.
A, a model that, where there is a very strong warrant committee. Is that the best model? It is for Arlington. Is this the best model for Milton? Possibly. What I'm suggesting here is something appears to be broken when I see that level of turnaround and the amount of work that it takes for you folks to put together a budget as a volunteer group, that I think maybe there's a time to examine that and maybe shift gears. And it's something to consider.
Seth, just, just one question. In terms of Arlington's finance committee or warrant committee, it's my understanding that, that the chair and certainly a lot of members of that committee have been there for years?
They have, yeah.
Yeah, there is, there is no turnover. The chair there has probably been the chair for twenty years.
And this gets back to sort of culture. I mean, they, they sort of, for whatever reason, they love to invest that amount of time and they live and breathe it. I think it's, it's almost impossible to project that onto and to have that as an expectation for other communities.
Hi, I'm Stephen Alphenato, I'm one of the three elected park commissioners in the town. And first of all, a very comprehensive report and we appreciate the time you took. Just jumping on some of what the other speakers got up and said about the interaction between the department, current department heads and the other elected boards and the town administrator. I don't disagree with what you had said about strong town administrator and, and other personnel in that office, but we have had, I'm going on six years in, as a park commissioner, and we've had a great relationship with the current town administrator, our department head has a great working relationship and we did with the past town administrator. So I don't necessarily see the, I, I don't know if it exists with the other elected boards and department heads, the headbutting, but from what I see from mine on my second term here, it, it's, it's always worked. You know, we don't always agree, but we get along and we get to the end result. Secondly, on the consolidation of folks like myself, the, the park department, we actually disagreed when they did the consolidated facilities department, we disagreed with the past town administrator. And we stated the reasons why and we were able to get by it and we were able to continue to turn out a good product on the other end with really a bare bones budget. We've been level funded, I think, every one of my years on the, on the board of park commissioners, I think, except for last year. And we were able to turn out a great product, so that just leads to my endpoint, I think, to the board of selectmen. I think you have to be very cautious when we talk about consolidating different areas of our town government, because I think what you can end up with in a lot of departments is a very watered-down product that you're going to come out with on the other end. The product we put out there as the park department, the residents of this town have their eyes on and their hands on every day. The shape of the parks, the, you know, recreation departments and we have, our boots on the ground is our department head who's there every day with the very small permanent staff. And, you know, we're able to set the policy at our meetings, but we need that person that's out there every day, you know, inspecting the grounds, monitoring the recreation, you know, the department, recreation department activities. And I think I'd just be very cautious of how we consolidate and, you know, look before we leap. I was actually very glad to hear to take some time before they could do anything like that, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. Anyone else? Mr. Walker?
Roy Walker, town meeting member, committee vice chair, town government study committee member. First, thanks for all of your work. I think this gives us a lot to think about and a lot to talk about. You've talked about some long-term planning, you've talked about structural changes, you've talked about process changes. In my professional experience, it's always better to develop your organizational strategy and then talk about what structure supports that as opposed to the other way around. I hope you would agree with that. So in, in that light, a few questions. Who do you see leading some of these strategic planning discussions? Because I, I would agree, we need some strategic planning to kind of set the framework for where we're going. Who do you see leading the long-term financial planning discussions and what, what does that process look like? And that, that leads me to the two positions that you've recommended, both of which I agree with. For both the assistant town administrator, human resources, and the assistant town administrator for finance, what do you see as the key areas of expertise that those two positions will need? And then finally, particularly with the, the CFO role, as we're calling it, how do you, how do you see that individual or that function creating this long-term financial plan? We've got an elected treasurer, appointed accountant. Can it work with that model or do you see some issues there?
Jumping into some of these questions. One of the successful models that we've seen in terms of strategizing and creating sort of this broad strategic plan, if you will. And then specifically, I think, interrelated with that would be this long-term financial plan, if you will, has been through the creation of, and it's not really a creation, but a meeting of a tribe board. We look at the board of selectmen, the school committee and the warrant committee. We've seen that model in, in several communities where they carve out one meeting a month and that meeting is solely dedicated to better gaining a sense of what, what are the long-term priorities of the community? As far as how they go about doing that? As far as how they go about doing that, you know, in the early sessions, it's coming together and just getting a general sense of what that group sees. Engaging residents through public hearings, through public surveys, gathering those opinions, and really forming sort of, you know, maybe a five-point vision of what this community is. So that's sort of how I would address that. Then it's a matter of marrying those with the annual budget. And I go into that a little bit in the report. And so how does a priority, how do you meet a priority through departmental goals and objectives? And that's something that we would see, you know, one of these assistant town administrators for finance doing. As far as, you mentioned sort of key areas of expertise in the HR and finance, those two positions, I think one of them was already mentioned. I think collective bargaining is a tremendous responsibility. There's a lot of knowledge and expertise, as you know, that's required in order to carry those out and negotiate in good faith. And so having somebody on board that has experience in that, I think, is key. As far as sort of the CFO type of position, somebody who has experience in municipal finance. If you're looking at sort of creating these efficiencies between town and school, I think it would be sort of difficult to go to the market and find somebody who has experience in both. But certainly, you have somebody in Town Hall here as your town accountant, I think, who has the skill sets to maybe assume that responsibility. Sounds like on a short-term basis, until potentially there can be an independent position there, which is a model that we've seen work in other communities, to answer your other question, is there's a tremendous amount of work that's involved in carrying out both those roles. But as the CFO, you know, she would have, or this position would have, good staff in place that they would delegate sort of the day-to-day activities to. And so, you know, we would look to the assistant town accountant, assistant treasurer, collector, and all those, and understand what their roles and responsibilities are in coming with something that works.
That was two-thirds of it. The elected treasurer, appointed town accountant, any issues there?
Yeah, I mean, certainly as part of moving to the centralized management approach, we recommend going to an appointed treasurer, collector position. This is really goes back to my concept of mitigating risk and how do we do that? And I'm in a very small community doing a report now, and the idea that they can tap somebody from within the population to take what is becoming a very complex set of job responsibilities, we're issuing multimillion-dollar bonds, we're, you know, reconciling books, it's hard to find somebody who has that skill set. And luckily, you've been able to do that, but that's not to say that you'll be able to do that going forward. And so having the ability to advertise and go to the marketplace and find somebody who has experience, it just, you know, lessens the risk that you're going to find somebody who can assume those positions.
Thank you.
Could I just add one thing?
Sure.
Just in terms of our financial forecasting and where we are on it, we have formed a committee of the, what's Glenn's official role?
Assistant superintendent.
Assistant superintendent for business, Amory, Amy, and myself as kind of a onlooker, if you will, to at least start that process. So we've, I think we've had two or three meetings so far, starting to develop a strategy. I think the one thing we didn't focus on before was the outreach to the town itself in terms of goals and objectives. I think that's a great idea. I don't think we were really focused on that that much. But the other thing is, we do have the advantage this year of having a master plan committee that is going to be doing an awful lot of outreach meetings, which would be focusing on probably a lot of those similar kinds of goals that we can kind of just grab onto.
So I'm really pleased with the start that we're off to. I think that we've got a couple of committees, consolidation, long-term financial planning. I think the thrust of my expertise question to Zach was that, again, drawing on my professional experience, if you decide on a strategy and a structure that supports that, we have to be careful not to make the mistake that the people that are performing very well in their current roles are necessarily the right people for those expanded roles. And that says nothing about, you know, I think we've got a lot of talent here, so that's not the issue. But we need to stay focused first on what is it that we need in terms of expertise that will get us there, and then making sure that we get the right expertise.
Agreed.
Anyone else want to speak? Mr. Cronin?
Thank you. I'm John Cronin, former town administrator, former conservation commissioner, former park commissioner, and present town meeting member for precinct four. Jim Mullins up in the back there, he's another emeritus, and he's encouraging me to come down and speak. The, we should not be, we should not be too afraid of the language that's in the report, the very good D O R report. The bylaws of the town require the board of selectmen to assemble the budget of the town. And I think there's no reason why they can't enter into commentary to the warrant committee on the outside departments. It is a little tough sometimes to do the budget of the town, at least back in my years, 35 years, because we never had the school department budget. They just ignored the selectmen's request or instructions to submit the budget by a certain date. Now, I haven't been following it, Mary, the last few years, so I am not speaking about the gormly years. Consolidation down L is something where you can save some money. When I arrived here in 1968, in the selectmen's office, we had, I think, eight custodians working between the libraries, the town office building, and the school preceded this building. And we got that down to one, and using high school students to do the mowing and the snow shoveling, and it worked out just fine. I think of the central maintenance garage. We had five mechanics in the town, the fire department, the wire department, the police department, the water highway, and we put them all together, and it boiled down to two. So there's opportunities, no doubt, to save on the financial sector as well. And consolidation, elimination of elected boards. The town has done that. The water commissioners, the water department, they yielded and gave up their roles to allow the public works department to be formed. Sewer commissioners, I think the sewer commissioners came first, and then the water commissioners, who have been old timers, they really knew the water very well. And so they, but they gave up, it's in the interest of the town. And then the elected treeward did likewise. As a matter of fact, he, the fellow, agreed to run again for another year's term, so the town meeting could vote to change it from being elected to appointed. So again, cooperative spirit prevailed. Now, we come to some of these changes. We'll still need a board of assessors if it's appointed. And we have some very good assessors now, and I hope that the board of selectmen will be talking with them and assuring them that they, in fact, will continue to serve as appointed assessors if they, if the roles change. The chief assessor the other day asked me what's broken, so we'll have to work on answering that question, too. So those are just a few comments from a historian.
Thank you, Mr. Cronin. Anyone else? We just, we have about five minutes left before we're going to shut it off. Okay, John?
Thank you. I want to thank you for a very mindful and very thoughtful approach on this. I understand that this is a high-altitude view. It's really not delving into the details, day-to-day operation. But when you concluded the assessment of the horizontal structure of management and government, you have one paragraph that speaks to establishment of the baseline of the way the rest of this report should be read, and that is that it's assuming that these new positions are created. And if they're not created, that at least some of the financial functions can be implemented. But I read that, and then I read the rest of the report, and I still felt that a lot of the recommendations made in the end can still be implemented with greater difficulty and maybe some burden on the current structure. What is your thought on that? Can some of these recommendations be implemented?
Yeah, absolutely. I'm not suggesting that you can't explore implementing those recommendations because you chose not to fund that position or expand that position. Merely, that was just designed to create some context to the report itself, and it's just easier to write rather than pointing to two or three individuals, and it just sort of muddles the outcome. So certainly, you know, I would agree that there are any recommendations that makes mention to responsibilities being overseen by the assistant town administrator for finance, although Amory might not like it, I think that she could assume those roles.
Mary Kelly?
Mary Kelly, I'm a present town meeting member, school committee member for many years. I appreciate this report. I think it's a long time in coming for the town of Milton, and I think our efforts in consolidation, I think, to your point, are somewhat groundbreaking for towns. I think what you're prescribing here is sort of trying to take towns and change them over more to a city-type environment. And it's not being handed legislatively, it's sort of being pushed on communities to say, you guys figure this out. And I'm wondering, from a legislative perspective, is there any talk of these types of things that might make it easier, not require some of this? Because it seems like we're trying to break into a new realm. Additionally, with regard to the town administrator, which I think is a very important position, but in this town, the budget for the schools is at least half, half of it. If you break out the insurance, it's probably more than half, right? And so we, you're basically saying we need to make this position more powerful in sort of the overarching direction of the town, and yet it's not incorporating the school side of it. And I think that's something that needs to be brought up in discussions, whether it's in those joint meetings that you're having. But even with finances, I appreciate that our assistant superintendent for business is part of that committee, but your role, in my opinion, this should be a school committee position, not that I'm volunteering, but maybe Leroy would like to do it, should also be there, because it truly is a partnership. And the other thing I just want to mention in response to Mr. Cronin is, I have been on this committee for 11 years, and I can guarantee you that our budgets are in on time, and they're actually more specific and more accessible than any other town budget here. And so, you know, the schools have come a long way in this regard, and I think, I hope that the town side will do as well. So again, I appreciate your work. I think we have a lot of work to do. We've certainly started in the right direction, but it really takes a cooperative effort.
Thank you, Mary. I think we have time for one more.
Hi. Maggie McAvaney. I'm on no committees. I'm just a concerned taxpayer. I have a quick question. I just happen to be reading through this regarding the pilot agreements. It seems like you've got quite a bit of money, the 470 from Curry College, and I'm just wondering why we can't think about formalizing those agreements to be giving us additional revenues, perhaps they could help fund some of these positions that you're looking to do. And another question is, if my memory serves correct, did we receive money from the state for the Blue Hills area because it was tax exempt?
Because it's state-owned land.
Yeah, and I know that with the bad economy, then that stopped, and I don't know if you think there's any type of way that that might be coming back to the town.
I can answer some of that. The, in our cherry sheet, we still get pilot money from the state for Blue Hills and for the DCR land that's in the town.
Yeah, I mean, certainly the state, like local government, is also struggling. So as far as more revenue coming from the state, fortunately, I don't see that coming. Hopefully, as the economy gets better and revenues improve, it should be a rising tide for everyone.
I could say it's not been cut.
Yeah. As far as the pilot agreements, I think this is something to look at. Of course, you need to be very sensitive about these things. The institutions that you have in town, you know, they're in a large ways an economic engine. They provide a lot of benefits, but it's a matter of reaching out to them, because they do consume resources of the town, whether it's public safety or whatnot. And so really, reaching out and trying to form what I would see as a partnership, and luckily, you have a model there with Curry College, and just formalizing those going forward.
And just so you know, the person who asked the question, it is important to know that we, we're just putting together a committee, a pilot committee, to assess every nonprofit in town. Yeah, you can see Amory and give your name, absolutely. We're looking for members. Anyone else? This is it. Last call. Okay, good. We're going to leave it at that. I want to thank you, Zach and Melanie, for coming.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Wonderful detailed report.
Do you want to adjourn? Entertain the motion to adjourn from the school committee meeting?
Thank you.
Moved by Mr. Walker. Do I have a second? Second by Mrs. Zulus. Thank you. You want to take a recess?
We will. And Mike, we'll take a probably a five-minute recess while everybody's moving out. Okay, we're back in open session for the October 23 Board of Selectment meeting. The item three on the agenda is a discussion on article number one of the October town meeting, citizens petition to establish a town government study committee. Tom, my understanding is that you met with the town government study committee?
I did.
You have come to some resolution here?
Yes, we had a couple of meetings. From the selectmen's standpoint, we were concerned that, you know, we'd wind up with two government study committees, which clearly would not be to anybody's advantage. So we have had some conversations and have come to a compromise agreement with that, the proponents of that article, to basically keep the existing committee, add some additional appointments from the moderator. And they appear to be on board with that.
Okay. So presently, there is, do you want to talk about the, do you agree with that?
Well, I can, yeah, basically, right now, it's a nine-member committee. There are two openings on the committee right now, and there will be one additional opening coming in November. Currently, there are two moderator-appointed members of that committee. Our recommendation to town meeting will be, we would allow the moderator to appoint those additional three, to make it five moderator-appointed positions, and four board of selectmen-appointed positions. And the committee would continue to report to town meeting and the moderator, and make a report to the selectmen.
Okay. Well, Katie?
Tom, is that, so the citizen group that proposed this article would be willing to agree to recommend that Article One be voted no on our word that we would transfer those pay points over to the moderator?
With them, because we were talking before as it being a friendly amendment, and it is, it is friendly in that sense, but I agree with you and with John, it really isn't an amendment to that article, because that couldn't be amendment. So, yeah, it will necessarily mean either voting down Article One. So, yeah, it will necessarily mean either voting down Article One with the provision that we will do what we say we're doing, is offering those additional appointments by the moderator.
I think the big thing is that we don't want to lose the work that this committee's done for two years.
Absolutely.
This has been a committee that's, nine appointees, there's been a little bit of turnover on it in terms of a few people stepping down, including Anne-Marie and myself, but this is a committee that was given a very broad charge, looked at the issues of the structure of town meeting and town, different forms of government that might be other options, and has done a lot of work in this area. I would hate to see that work be put aside in a whole new committee committee and start reinventing the wheel, so to speak.
This committee has spent hours of outreach and research, and, you know, it's done a great job, you know, understanding it's a committee and it's a committee process, so, you know, I get the sense it was some people would, you know, want to see the change happen quicker and the recommendations be more dramatic, but it's a process, and-
We wouldn't be here tonight hearing the DOR report if it weren't for the government study committee-
Right.
And the different recommendations that have come out of that, so this is a-
And I'm getting the nods from the government study committee.
Two members who are here in the audience.
The two members that are in the audience.
That sounds like that would be a workable solution if the citizen group that put this forward is concerned.
Yeah.
I think independence of the committee is really what was motivating them-
Yep.
-from different anecdotal-
Right.
-comments that we had heard and-
And clearly what's motivating me is change, that the change occurs, you know, that I think it is needed within the town of Milton in terms of our government, and in terms of who appoints the committee is irrelevant to me.
Yeah, I would agree with that. I think we just want the continued, the committee's work to go on, and there's a lot of issues to look at and focus on, as tonight was evidenced of.
All right.
Okay.
Well, we'll leave it at that, and we'll see you at town meeting. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to enter executive session to discuss the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real estate, the town-owned land on Central Avenue, and to return to open session for the purpose of adjournment.
Second.
Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Hurley?
Yes.
And Mr. Cohen, yes, we're in executive session.